Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As my phone goes off in the middle of the pledge.
Do you need to pick it? I'll have to call you back.
We'll wait. Go ahead.
That really happened out by the dance.
It was my daughter. I'm sorry.
It happens.
She must, this being, the mayor must be near her.
Yeah. I don't know what, 360 must have set something else. I don't know where I'm at right now. Anyway, as we get started this evening, I would like to first, before we go into the agenda, we're going to change a little bit, I'd like to bring our planning director Hannah Williams up. Hannah is going to talk about our comprehensive plan that's coming up and the meetings and all the things that are getting ready to happen with that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. We are doing our comprehensive plan kickoff meetings next week on June 25th and 26th. There's various staff meetings going on, but there are three different meetings that are open to the public going on in the evenings. Whitnall is having a neighborhood workshop taking place at 5:30 at Whitnall Elementary School in the Library Media Center. And that is at 1425 Berkeley Street. That's for Whitnall residents and anyone interested in talking about future land use and community input from Whitnall area. Same thing for West End. There's a West End Neighborhood Workshop happening at the same time from 5:30 to 7:30 at Mount Pilgrim Holiness or Baptist Church, and that's at 5:39 Willow Street, happening also at 5:30. That's for anyone interested in getting involved in West End community engagement revitalization in that neighborhood, as well as overall with the future land use of the city of Lenore and all over the city. And then there is a community open house at the Blue Ridge Energy District Office Community Meeting Room at 100 Cooperative Way, and that begins at 5:30. That will be a drop-in style community open house.
That's on Tuesday.
Oh, and that's on June 26th, the following night, Wednesday. Yeah. So, the neighborhood workshops are happening concurrently Tuesday evening, and the community open house is happening at 5:30 on Wednesday 26th.
Okay.
All right. And we also have this wonderful promo video featuring Joe Gibbons and produced by Joshua Harris.
It's broken.
Do I have to click play?
Good afternoon. I'm Joe Gibbons, Mayor of the City of Lenore, and I welcome you to downtown Lenore today. I'm here to talk to you about an upcoming City of Lenore Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan is a, is a guide for the City of Lenore for the next 20 to 25 years and how we move forward as a, as a great city. We would like for you to come out to the community open house. This will be on June 26th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at Blue Ridge Energy Community Meeting Room. That's the district office of Blue Ridge Energy. Again, on June 26th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. We would really love to have the input of the citizens of Lenore. The more input we have, the better plan that we can put together for the future of downtown and the city of Lenore as a whole. So, please come out, join us for the community meetings, go online and do the surveys if you will, and just be interested. And if you will find a way, we want you to be involved. If anyone wants to try that, you're welcome to, I tell you.
Off to Hollywood.
There he goes. That's a start.
All right. I'll tell you what, he does a good job of putting it together because there were some stumbles and bumps, I can tell you through all of that. But thank you, Josh. You and Hannah do a great job. All right. We'll move on then. We do not have matters scheduled for public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. This would consist of item A, our budget amendments. This is for the annual budget ordinance ending FY 2024. This would be for the following budget amendments to the annual budget ordinance for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, as follows. Number one, approve the utilization of additional general fund revenues for needed expenditures. Number two, or approve the allocation of general fund expenditures for such obligations as professional services and for needed repairs for various equipment and buildings during the fiscal year. Item three is approve the reallocation of enterprise fund expenditures. Number four, approve the revision of the wayfinding signs capital project budget ordinance to add embellishments. And number five is approve the funding for Main Street expenditures. Item B is a capital project budget ordinance. This is for wayfinding signs capital project. This is a recommendation for the, adopt the revised capital project budget ordinance for the wayfinding signs capital project in the amount of $629,500 as submitted. Note, the project is to be funded by an ARC grant, an ARPA revenue replacement funds, local funds, and an allocation from the Lenore Tourism Development Authority, as known as the LTDA. And item C is FY 2024, 20 through 2026 paving bid award. Following review of bids submitted for this contract, staff will be recommending awarding the contract to J.T. Russell &amp; Sons Incorporated for a unit price of $110.30 per ton for a two-year period. Note, J.T. Russell &amp; Sons Incorporated is the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, is appropriately licensed in the state of North Carolina, and is adequate, adequate equipped to perform work of this nature. J.T. Russell &amp; Sons Incorporated bid included the required bid security bond and an escalator clause for unit price adjustment based on liquid asphalt price fluctuation. That is your consent agenda items A through B, A through C, excuse me, and then the, all the budget amendments included in item A. I will open it up for any discussion and/or motion when you're ready about the consent agenda or questions, if anyone has any.
Mr. Mayor, before a motion is made, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Hildebrand and Ms. Williams for their tutorial to me on these items. Lot of it was not firsthand, you looked at it and you understand it. So, thank you for that explanation that you gave to me. So, with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
All right. We have a motion for Councilmember Perkins for approval of the consent agenda items A through C as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That's unanimous tonight. That would be six. Thank you. On that. All right. We'll move on to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council tonight, this is the time to do so. Everyone here is our staff, and we appreciate all of you guys being here tonight. Appreciate what you do. Seeing no one to have any questions, we'll move on. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to a report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council tonight, some items for your information. The summer concert series will continue this Friday night, June 21st, from 7 to 10 with the band Opal Moon, performing on the downtown stage. Then the next week, the following week, we have Misty D and the Rhythm Kings, and they'll perform on Friday, June 28th. And then Dullup Radio is scheduled to perform on Friday, July 5th downtown. The movie Migration will be shown on Saturday, June 29th at 7 o'clock at the former LHS auditorium. City office will be closed on Thursday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. The City of Lenore fireworks show will be held on Thursday, July 4th, beginning at 9:30 at Optimus Park. Cruising is scheduled on Saturday, July 6th, beginning at 3 PM in downtown. And of course, the annual North Carolina Blackberry Festival will be held on Friday, July 12th and July 13th in downtown Lenore. And I know Brenda's working hard getting everything squared away on that for everyone. So, that's your items for information this evening. You have one item for council action, and that, we request that item be deferred July 16th. This is a substance offered to purchase from Sillar Corporation. They failed to get their bid deposit in on time, and by law, we have to wait to go back and do that to the bid deposits in, and that should be in, hopefully, in the next couple of days, and so we'll put that on July 13th for your consideration.
Okay. Do we need to do a motion for that, or just?
I think legally, we just have to defer it.
Okay. Then we'll defer that to the next, the next meeting.
And then we have a, later in the evening, we have scheduled a closed session for economic development purposes.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. We'll move on then to any report or recommendations of city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
Just something for closed session.
Okay.
Shouldn't take very long.
Okay. You want to say what is concerning?
It's about pending litigation involving David Doris Williams and Crestcom Bank.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Don't have any reports from the mayor's office. I think we've got most, all our events moving forward. Thank everybody for all the work so far that you've been doing coming into this, into our summer season, and we've already had several concerts on the square, a movie, as we talked about, it's already been at the old auditorium at the campus. So, things are moving well with that, and a lot of other events are coming up. I know Recreation's probably got a lot of things happening this summer that are moving forward, and we've got a lot of things. I know Police just had a very successful camp that went great. I went out one day, enjoyed that, and thank you guys for putting that together. I know the, the young people, I won't call them kids, it was young people involved in that, were excited and had a great time with it. Thank y'all for doing that, and hopefully you get to keep doing it and expand it and grow it even more than it is. So, we appreciate that very much on that. I'll turn it over. Any council member, any report?
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we, the, some of the Juneteenth activities kicked off over the weekend, and I, I know that there were several council members that attended the Saturday events. Tomorrow is actually Juneteenth, and Tony Carlton will be performing on the square, and that starts at 6:30. So, we'll continue Juneteenth celebrations on Juneteenth.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add to that? Well, Saturday was a really nice event. It was done well at the MLK Center, and we appreciated that. They honored Reverend Norwood. Yeah. Received a very special award, and he was very humbled by it, I can tell you that, and we appreciated that. And they also honored Mrs. Green. Yeah. With a proclamation from the NAACP honoring her for all her many, many years of service, and we certainly miss her all the time. She was one great lady and did so many great things for not only the freedom community, but just everyone in, in our community. Beautiful, wonderful artist, and we, we miss her terribly. So, that was nice that they recognized that. The mural seems to be coming along up there a little bit. I know that I saw the actual layout of it, not just kind of sketchy on that, and I know that will be, that will be coming forward in the near future. So, good things happening there. All right. If there is nothing else coming for us with all that, we want, we have a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318, point 11, point 4, subsection 11 4. City council will enter into closed session, discuss economic development and potential litigation.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. That would be under A3.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We go into closed session.
A motion for Councilmember Stevens to go into closed session. If nothing else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Expect no action.
We're in closed session. We don't expect any action from that. Thank y'all. Got you out of here in about 16, 17 minutes. How about that? That's good.